All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to November Planning Commission Meeting for the Village of Vicksburg. I will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We will start with attendance. Secretary Cox, please take attendance.
Mr. Schenkel?
Present.
Mr. DeBolt?
Here.
Mr. Whitella?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Here.
Bill Cox as present. Nick Ryashi?
Here.
And Mr. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. And next item on our agenda for the evening is approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has had time to review the agenda. If you have any comments or questions, you can certainly address those. Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Chairman Schenkel, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
We have a motion from Member Holmes. Support for that motion?
Support by Plankenhorn.
Support from Plankenhorn. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Next item on our agenda for this evening is a closed session. We do have a motion for that.
Yes, so motion. We move the Planning Commission meeting into a closed session under Section 8.1H of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to Section 13.1G of the Freedom of Information Act to consider a written legal opinion from the village attorney.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Member Cox. Do we have support for that?
Chairman Schenkel has seconded the motion.
Support from Holmes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
This will be a roll call vote.
Roll call. Thank you. All right, Secretary Cox, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Yes.
Cox says yes. Mr. Ryashi?
Yes.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion on the floor from Member Cox. Do we have support for that?
Chairman Schenkel has seconded the motion.
Support from Holmes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
This will be a roll call vote.
Roll call. Thank you. All right, Secretary Cox, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Yes.
Cox says yes. Mr. Ryashi?
Yes.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to November Planning Commission Meeting for the Village of Vicksburg. I will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We will start with attendance. Secretary Cox, please take attendance. Mr. Schenkel?
Present. Mr. DeBolt?
Here.
Mr. Whitella?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Here.
Bill Cox as present. Nick Ryashi?
Here.
And Mr. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. And next item on our agenda for the evening is approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has had time to review the agenda. If you have any comments or questions, you can certainly address those. Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Chairman Schenkel, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
We have a motion from Member Holmes. Support for that motion?
Support by Plankenhorn.
Support from Plankenhorn. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Next item on our agenda for this evening is a closed session. We do have a motion for that.
Yes, so motion. We move the Planning Commission meeting into a closed session under Section 8.1H of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to Section 13.1G of the Freedom of Information Act to consider a written legal opinion from the village attorney.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Member Cox. Do we have support for that?
Chairman Schenkel has seconded the motion.
Support from Holmes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
This will be a roll call vote.
Roll call. Thank you. All right, Secretary Cox, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Here.
Bill Cox as present. Nick Ryashi?
Here.
And Mr. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. And next item on our agenda for the evening is approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has had time to review the agenda. If you have any comments or questions, you can certainly address those. Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Chairman Schenkel, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
We have a motion from Member Holmes. Support for that motion?
Support by Plankenhorn.
Support from Plankenhorn. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
This will be a roll call vote.
Roll call. Thank you. All right, Secretary Cox, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Yes.
Cox says yes. Mr. Ryashi?
Yes.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and go back to the bench. I will call for a motion to bring us back into the open session.
Member Cox, iso motion?
Motion by Cox, support.
Support by Holmes.
Support by Holmes. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Cox.
Chairman Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Yeah.
Mr. Cox says yes. Mr. Ryashi?
Yes.
And Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Great. Next item on our list is citizen comments. We do have citizens in the room. Just to let you know that if you do have comments, you must state your full name, your home address, and your time is limited to four minutes, so... I'm sorry. Yes, you're welcome to step right up here.
Kathleen Wills. I live at 302 South Michigan Avenue in Vicksburg. And was that all you required for me to start? Is that good? I'm good? Yes, okay, so I am here because I own the gym, and I'm a tenant right now. I bought the building on the corner of Boulevard and Prairie here, and I have some drawings here that I can pass out. This here is Boulevard, and this is Prairie, and this is what an aerial view of what I hope the gym will eventually look like. Because the building was sold, and Jill Walsh and Matt Bolton from Edward Jones, they're kicking me out in May, knowing that I will not be ready at all, knowing that that was not going to work for me, but anyway, that's what I've got to work with, and so I'm hoping that I will get the permission to open Justy's Back Bays to move into eventually. I think I can swing it financially, and my footprint there will fit into here, but I will need some waivers on parking, and I'll need to work closely with the village to make this happen. If it doesn't happen, then I will rent it out to the highest bidder for an industrial endeavor, and I just think it would be a shame for the village to miss... And I just think it would be a shame for the village to miss out on like a really awesome community fitness center. But it may end up be, to be an industrial, industrial corner if, if I can't make this happen. So I am willing to do whatever you guys ask of me to make this happen. I do have limitations financially, time-wise. But I'm just here knowing that I'm not going to be on the actual agenda until January. So hopefully we can get everything kind of knocked out prior to that. I will be here again in January, January, or December 11th. And then here for a final thumbs up or thumbs down in January. And at that point, I'll need to get through the budgeting phase, the bank, and get construction lined up and finished in time to move in by June. So it's a, it's kind of a race and I hope that you will be willing to work with me. I'll be back in December and available for any, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to reach out because I am available to make this happen. Thanks. I'm gonna excuse myself now, but I'm always available. Thank you. And I'm actually gonna leave these drawings up here for anyone who's interested. I have my own. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more citizen comments? All right.
John Steers, 5786 ECB Avenue. I came here tonight because I was hoping that your master plan didn't look like Brady Township's master plan. I was a little disappointed in the fact that it was probably even worse. And when I say that, I see a master plan that just says we have sewer and we have water. So thank you very much for all the work we did on this 10-year master plan. That's all it says. We've been inundated for 30 years, ever since I've been here, with this plan and that plan and how sewer and water is gonna be handled in this area. Unfortunately, we can't have 15 different plans to handle our sewer. Our most important things, for matter of fact, on that master plan are utilities. We have been told that your, the village's USDA application is a remove and replace all of the sewer lines all the way coming up Sprinkle Road. Well, that's fine, go ahead and remove and replace all of them. That would take me and all the people that are in the plantation and in the Cannon Acres off of the hope of, fear of being sewer with the South County Sewer and Water Authority. But the USDA has told us that, oh, no, you can just leave that, they can leave that in the ground and it doesn't matter whether they applied for this or that. So now I've got the South County Sewer and Water Authority refusing to do a couple of things. One, tell me whether that sewer line is going to stay in the ground. Two, whether our involvement in the St. Joe County project, which I, I'm really not believing that any of you don't have a close eye on this project, given its scope and given its involvement in Barton Lake and Mr. Olson saying about the project overruns. It's gotten to be to the point where we have all of these eggs in the air and nobody's willing to talk about anything in regards to how you're going to do sewer, how you're going to do water. Brady has told us in our, before I went to the meeting, well, we'll just get our meat, water from either Vicksburg or Portage. Also in their master plan, they said that they would just, well, we'll just go ahead and get water, you know, from somewhere. Well, if you guys are digging a well, I'm assuming that you're gonna dig a well over by your industrial park. That would be the only place where you're not gonna have the pollution coming, you know, that way. And it gets, it gets to the point where we need transparency. If you're gonna go ahead and build the shiny city on the hill and you're going to send people to my meetings and my meetings where we finally get our charter township and we, you know, are going to vote on that, you send what you call the Vicksburg mafia, the Vicksburg mafia, to my meeting and pretend not to know what charter townships are all about and what annexation is all about, while in your own master plan, you're saying, well, you know, if we get some more land outside of the, we acquire or whatever, we've got enough sewer and water to handle that. We are tired of, and I'm coming onto my time, we are tired of this all being in the air and everybody not pretending to know what's going on with the most important things that you as a planning commission are asked to do. And that is to figure these things out. So to put something on a document and just say, well, we've got water and sewer, so here, why don't you guys comment on that? Well, I can't comment on that because you guys are meeting in either privately or wherever you be and you've got a plan. And if you don't have a plan for this huge thing that you're gonna build here, then you all aren't competent enough to run this village. Thank you for your time.
All right, any other citizen comments? All right, not seeing any movement. I'm gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes from our October 9th meeting. Again, trust everyone has had time to review those minutes and I'll call for a motion to approve those.
Chairman Schenkel, make a motion to approve the minutes for October 9th as submitted.
A motion from Member Holmes, support for that motion? Support from Ortella, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, thank you. All right, on to Planning Commission action items. We have a site plan review from Kepco Properties, 300 West Prairie Street. And Village Manager Mallory will provide us with that recommendation.
A, correct. Yes, this has been a lengthy process, I think Paula can attest to. I think it started almost a year ago, if not sooner. I know January, we were in front of public bodies and again in the April-May timeframe. So we've, we've worked with, with Paula Haas Stettler and her team, with our team at McKenna. And we've had, where the setback from the waterway and that variance was approved previously with the Planning Commission and have worked on this development. I give credit to McKenna and Paula's patience with questions and clarifications and back and forth. But we are here now tonight and I'll turn it over to Kyle Mucha to go into more detail. We're all available for questions from Planning Commission members. But I'm very excited to provide staff's recommendation that there is motion, support, and approval of this site plan review by Kepco Properties at 300 West Prairie. It'll be a great addition to the Village of Vicksburg. And looking forward to it, as I know with site plan approval, we've also been through the process where a grant has been, been approved for the property and that as well. So with that, I'll let Kyle present more in detail, the area around zoning and that. But we're available for any questions from Planning Commission members, thank you.
Good evening, folks. As Mr. Mallory has indicated before, we have been working with the applicant and owner on this site for some time. We are happy to present to you a site plan review for approval. The brief background is the applicant has requested to convert the existing garage structure on 300 West Prairie into a coffee shop. So that does follow through with site plan review and approval, which is why it's before you per our zoning ordinance. So the proposed use of a coffee shop is a permitted use in the C2 district, which this subject site is zoned for. So we find that it does not need special land use approval in that regard. So a simple yes or no vote, well, hopefully a yes vote from the Planning Commission is all that is sufficed. Site plan review submission requirements, we look at this to see, has it been stamped by a licensed architect? It has been by Howard Lee Overbeek. We also looked in at the proposed setbacks from any new structures to the site, property dimensions. As the commission may recall, or some members, the applicant did receive variance approval earlier this year to, for this site and to others regarding expansion opportunities on here. The garage being one of them. 220 West Prairie, right Paula, was the other address, for expansion of the kitchen and then also 100 North Mill Street was another one that received a variance approval. So that is documented within the review letter as well. The applicant is proposing additional off-street parking on this. There's additional five spaces to be provided to the north of the structure itself and it will tie into the existing facility already at 220 West Prairie. On the parking itself, our recommendation from McKenna is to ask that the applicant submit the access agreement, which is a document that provides access for 300 West Prairie to 220 West Prairie for legal counsel review and then it to be filed with the village. In past experience, not so much with this applicant, but in general, what happens is a property sells, ownership changes, no one remembers that there is an agreement out there, it gets lost. So that is why we're asking that that document be submitted for record keeping as well at the village. So should Paula ever wish to sell, it is copied out there. From setbacks on lake streams, ponds, and rivers, again, they've already received a variance for this. However, we did note during our site plan review that there is an existing structure, is it a shed? It's a shed out there. So when we did our site plan review, we noted that this did not meet requirements. However, it appears that that shed is pre-existing. So we can, our intent would be that it be moved to a conforming location. However, it is pre-existing, then that is what we considered a non-conforming structure. So so long as it is not enlarged or altered in any way, it can maintain its current location. Screening requirements, we looked at and we found to be generally applicable. We have asked that the applicant provide just a kind of a use statement for 100 North Mill Street to determine what that is to be in the future. Past plans have included this to be a cottage. If it's a cottage and then a residential use, screening requirements would be required. However, it is zoned commercial, so if it is to remain commercial, screening would not be required. So we would just ask that the applicant provide confirmation of what that use is because that will have impacts on screening requirements. Further on in our document, we talk about site plan approval criteria and that's section 475-34 of the zoning ordinance. And throughout this, we review the application for conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And overall, we found that the applicant does meet the intent of the ordinance out here. There is one area requesting additional information and that's just exterior lighting to ensure it complies with the village ordinances, if there is going to be any exterior lighting. Further, we note that the site plan did include a sign to be placed on the subject site. However, we found that that could be reviewed administratively further on down the road if the applicant so wishes. We do request, as already indicated, that the parking agreement be supplied to village staff and legal counsel just for review and record keeping. And that we also noted that the proposed parking lot needs to be at least a minimum of five feet from the property line. It was not clearly dimensioned on the plans that could be an administrative review further on, but it just needs to be five feet away from property lines. So that's nothing that we found detrimental to a site plan review and approval. So overall, our recommendation is to review of the shared parking agreement to be conducted by the village attorney and then subsequent to any concerns there, just be recorded with the village clerk and then also County Register of Deeds Office. Again, that is just in case ownership ever changes in the future. That document then is a recorded document for future benefit. The west parking lot addition be setback a minimum of five feet from the property lines as required by village ordinance. The proposed storage structure next to the dumpster enclosure be removed from the site plan. If it's already a pre-existing structure, then we can disregard that. A six-foot tall screened fence be erected around the northern portion of the residential dwelling at 300 West Prairie Street. That is a legal non-conforming use as a residential use within the C2 district, which is that site is zoned for. So because of that is a residential use, we are asking that it be screened. And then five, confirmation of the use of the structure at 100 North Mill Street. And then six, details pertaining to the proposed exterior lighting of the subject site. So overall, our recommendation is for approval with these conditions. Happy to take questions on that.
This is a member Ortella. No indication that there's no additional curb. Graphic coming that exists prior, that's the same. And then it's just a gravel type of access out on the Mill Street?
I'm gonna defer to the applicant on that, Mr. Ortella, for sure. But yes, that is the plans that we reviewed to understand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Paulus, just to confirm, is the house still gonna be used for residential use? The, yes. Okay, thank you.
I have one comment. On the site plan, it notes stormwater runoff into the pond. I would just ask, that's not, nothing to, it's like, maybe further down the line, just ask that, somebody verify, that's okay.
Yeah, that'll be during the permit process with the village engineer as well as the one-way section, because we do have an ordinance that will govern what that surface is required to be.
Yeah, I think, but runoff into a pond.
No, I, I, yes.
I'm just, that's just a comment, it's not.
No, they're, they're aware of it.
May I ask Paula another question? Or Paula, when do you anticipate opening, if approved? Perfect answer, there we go. Sure. One last question, does that mean the apple knockers and ice cream will be available year-round now? I haven't voted yet, you realize.
Right.
And one question for you though. You said, what, with the house, would it ever, would you ever consider that becoming rental property? The house itself? Your brother wouldn't, like, I'm assuming, when he passes away or whatever, you use that as rental property. Would that become residential property then? Or is it now residential property?
So the current use, to our understanding, is that is a residential, it's a residential use. And under ordinance, it can continue to be a residential use so long as the use itself does not discontinue. So whether it's a family member or somebody else, as long as it's a residential use under our non-conforming section, it can maintain that. If the use is ever to be discontinued for a certain period of time, then she would have to conform to current standards. And then for clarity too, as well, it cannot go commercial and then back to residential. So once it is into a conforming use permitted under our zoning ordinance, it shall maintain that, permitted uses.
So the Planning Commission, we're clear, is the approval would come with, you know, the, I think, total of six or whatever the number that Kyle articulated would need to be addressed as well as the stormwater issue and, and the surface. But we felt that due to the timing of this, those could all be handled by staff to ensure that they meet the requirements, either whether it's stormed through the state legislature or the surface under our local ordinance. And we could try to get this project moving forward.
Any further questions for staff? Welcome, a motion to, on this action item.
This is a member Ortella. Plan presented for Kepco Properties, 300 West Prairie Street. Be approved, subject to the legislative condition being satisfied on page seven of McKenna memo dated October 24th.
And I would just add, the, the storm calculations as well as the surface of the one-way as well as the surface of the one-way drive.
We have a motion from Wortella. We have support for that motion.
Holmes, I support.
Support by Holmes, any further discussion on this action item?
Hey, Jim, one quick question, is the...
Thank you.
All right, we will do a roll call vote, Secretary Cox.
Chairman Schenkel?
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yes.
Mr. Ortella?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Cox is yes. Nick Ryashi?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda.
More than happy to stay, or...
Thank you so much, so excited.
Yeah, I have communication and waiting for Mike Schwartz's answer, so I'll reach out to you tomorrow. And, and I'll expedite his, his, okay, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 7B, master plan approval for public input.
Yes, again, I'll be turning it over to Kyle to, to talk about the process. A couple of things I want the planning commission and public to be aware of. This again is a, is a endeavor that, that we embarked upon many months ago that had multiple invitations. I think it was either four or five different sites within the village invited publicly for people to participate in. Kyle can give you those numbers. A survey instrument was created. With the input of that, to develop...